Next, we go on to 2018 Annual Parks and Recs Commission Report. Mr. Lentz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you're aware, the Parks and Recreation Commission was created in 2004 to act as an advisor to the board of supervisors. Over the course of 14 years, they've had a active role in assisting recreation agencies here in our community, but they've also helped the Parks and Recreation Department. For example, with our capital projects. They've also endorsed a lot of our policies and our budgets as well as our fee schedule. They've attended special events for us. They've attended the park and recreation events that we've had. They've attended ceremonies. They've also been within the park system walking, checking it out as a public unit group as well as individually. But most recently, over about two or two-and-a-half year period, we've created the code of conduct policy here within the county used by the Front Royal Police Department as well as the County, Warren County Sheriff's Office. But at this time, I'd like to introduce some of the members that are here tonight. First, we got Mr. Ron Hardy, he's a Hards member. And Mr. Bucksmith. Vice Chairman. And also Stacy Wilson, Hards Chairman. A lot of people could not make it to any of the other activities going on, but as traditional, back when we started this, we've had the Vice Chairman give the report. He's just going to highlight a few things with the 2018 annual report. So I'll turn it over to him, and if you have any questions at the conclusion report, we'd like to answer accordingly. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, board members. I know that you have the report that Dan put together attached to your sheet. And really what traditionally that I've done is I just go through and highlight a few things. The report's a lot more in depth, but just a few things, just to highlight some of the things, many of the things that we're very proud of. The commission has played an active role in the operations of the Parks and Recreation Department, and some of the highlights from the past year include: the following 2018 officers in February of 2018 were approved by the commission members, including Dan Lentz as our Chair, Bucksmith, myself as Vice Chair, and Debbie Cook as Secretary. Mr. Lentz reported, as he just mentioned, the final draft of the Code of Conduct Amendment. The MOU was presented by the town attorney and approved and adopted by the town council and the Board of Supervisors. The agreement between Warren County and Front Royal to allow the Front Royal Police Department to enforce the Code of Conduct and suspension guidelines in Warren County Parks and Recreation facilities owned by Warren County and located in the town limits according to the terms in the agreement has been a successful partnership. The Front Royal Police Department has exercised the authority to properly patrol parks located within town limits, issuing citations and no trespassing notices when needed to maintain safe and secure park facilities. The agreement allows the Front Royal Police Department to enforce rules that are not laws. The Front Royal Police Department has purchased and posted 25 signs at all indoor and outdoor Warren County facilities. The signs will state to report violators and to call the Front Royal Police Department or the Warren County Sheriff's Office. And that was enacted in March of 2018. Also in March of 2018, the commission members reviewed and discussed organizational year end reports provided by commission members and other recreational organizations. Also in March, Mr. Stanley reported the skate park was closed due to repair and damaged concrete. MC Design poured concrete on March 9th and has completed the work. A sealer was applied to help preserve the concrete. A press release was sent out with reopening with details. Several members of the recreational commission attended the dedication of the outdoor exercise equipment park at Rockland Park on May 1st, 2018. Mr. Lentz reported Ray Nash, a former golf superintendent at Lansdowne, has signed a contract to help get the Front Royal Golf Club in better shape. This is in November 2018. Mr. Nash has over 30 years of experience and will be working eight hours a day, three days a week to improve the course. The following is a list of projects that Mr. Nash has completed. He met with staff and inspected the course and equipment, adjusted all mower levels and professional sharpened the blades, trained staff on proper adjustment techniques, inspected the irrigation pump system, satellites and sprinkler heads, and made repairs. The course greens were aerated, seeded greens with bent grass, slid seeded and top dressed by Mr. Nash and golf staff over the past several weeks. The workshop has been organized for easy access and identification of all tools, parts, et cetera, and germination blankets were ordered. Also in November of 2018, the Parks and Recs Commission members endorsed and approved the 2019 fee schedule for the use of the Warren County Parks and Recreation facilities to be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors and scheduled November 7th meeting for its consideration and approval. The commission members individually toured, inspected, and attended activities in the Warren County park system and facilities throughout the spring, summer, and fall. The very last page talks about some of the future actions to be taken by the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I'll highlight just a few of those. One will be to assist with the continuing completion and redesign changes for the Rockland Park master plan, continue to tour the Parks and Recreation Department's ongoing capital projects to keep abreast of their development. The Parks and Recs Commission will continue to help guide the Parks and Recs Department to achieve success for the citizens of Warren County. If you have any questions, or Mr. Lentz, if you have any questions.
I have one question. I discussed before our meeting with Dan Lentz and others that on Facebook there was a number of comments regarding some homeless people apparently are now sleeping by the Parks and Recs Fantasyland area. And I've been told that that's been rectified and made sure that people feel safe having their children around the playground and equipment. Do you have any comments about that?
As I mentioned, that particular post, I believe, happened several months ago, even within the last year, but as it does typically warm up, you do see a lot of people out, excuse me, and park staff and both the Sheriff's Office as well as the Police Department and the DSS basically do our best to try to help individuals get them out of parks if they are troubled, you know, they're not vagrants. If they're there in the park, we can keep a close watch on the park system. And they've had several removed in the last couple of years that problems and issues that have arisen.
Yeah, I think I just want to know that, you know, that we as a county that we're doing something about it to keep people safe.
Anyone else? If not, I'd like to make a comment. Dan, I'd like to thank you and your team for what you do. It's a thankless job when people don't see what goes on behind the scenes. And I'd like you to pass on to your fellow workers our thanks for what they've done for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Do you want the chairman to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Supervisors approves 2018 annual report in Warren County Parks and Recreation Commission.
Is there any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Next is the 2018 Annual Planning Commission Report. Ms. Logan.
At the completion of each year, planning staff develops a report of the year's activities within our department. Planning Commission approves a report at their meeting in February. Report is included in your package. The commission staff were busy this year reviewing a variety of planning issues. We completed the review of the fiscal year 2018-2020 capital improvement plan, which was approved in April. The planning commission board worked to craft a strategic vision for that direction for the upcoming conference of planning. New home construction was laid down from last year with 157 home permits approved. The annual housing unit increase for 2018 was 0.93%. Subdivision activity increased this year with 46 new lots being approved. Over the last year, the planning commission reviewed 14 additional use permits. We also reviewed site plans for Valvoline, Quickloop, Taco Bell, the Chapewa Christian College, commuter lot in Linden, and for Mermer Plaza Fire Station. We continue to lead the Development Review Committee. We handle the Well and Septic Appeals Board, which reviewed one application last year as well as the water zoning appeals, which reviewed four variances last year. We continue to be involved with the regional planning efforts. We completed updates of the regional hazard mitigation plan and the regional water supply plan last year. We are also currently involved as the county representative for the county's CDBG project, and we launched the Front Royal Warren County Joint Tourism Committee. We are the county representative for that committee, and we developed and adopted a four-county tourism budget for the first time. We continue to make planning presentations to chamber leadership groups, the Smithsonian Conservation Research Center, each semester at George Mason students, and other community groups. We talk a lot about different developments, but I did want to point out that we do administer the county's conservation easement program in conjunction with county attorney's office. We continue to meet with prospective applicants, and the county holds 3,543 acres in conservation easement, and there's a total of 12,205 acres in conservation easement in county, a total of 34 easements. Planning staff did post these properties this year with specialty signage acknowledging the easements. Planning Commission and staff look forward to working with the Board of Supervisors to begin the conference of plan update this year. We look forward to completing our first county wide bicycle pedestrian plan, which is currently in the works, and we look forward to continue to assist the public with applications and review processes. And I'm happy to answer any questions. That's just a snapshot of the whole report.
Does anyone have a question from Ms. Logan? Anyone have a question? Ms. Logan just commented, this report's excellent. That explains everything I was able to follow as you went through the panel's job. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Chairman of the Board, if the Board wants to approve the annual report in Warren County by District 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
I would just like to say it was, the planning commission's done an excellent job. Our joint meeting was very interesting in presenting the report, and we appreciate all of the talk we've had with you. And we appreciate you.
Next. We have to, don't we? All in favor? Next is report from board members. Mr. Court.
I have a couple of things. First of all, I attended a joint meeting this afternoon of our family assessment team and community policy management team. We've been working on strategic planning for these organizations, and an update will be presented to this board at a later date this year. And I would like to congratulate Jeff White and Glenn Manner-Deniers on today's headlines in Northern Virginia Daily. It says that they brought home two gold medals and a silver medal in the preliminary round of the 2019 competition of Virginia Thunders Cup for winners. And congratulations to them. They're in my district, by the way.
Mr. Chairman? I will. Thank you. Mr. Bucksmith?
I have one.
Okay. I also attended the joint meeting of developer and the planning commission in N State for the planning commission meeting, and we have diligently been working on the budgets every week. Mr. Stanley?
A couple of items on my written report. First, Development Review Committee met on January 23rd. Committee discussed projects in the county, including a proposed motor freight terminal, a winner's court, that's the access road behind the RSW Regional Jail. The planning commission will hold public hearing on February 13th. DEQ has approved a plan for Taco Bell and waiting to receive their permit from DEQ for final site plan approval. Final draft of the county's strategic vision is on the agenda this evening. That was discussed at the last Development Review Committee as well. In town, they've discussed a potential ice vending machine business on South Royal Avenue near Joe's Steakhouse. The VFW's special use permit review with the town council, and they received updates on the Acton Inn and Dunkin' Donuts, both of which projects are under construction. Committee will meet again on February 27th. As was noted by some members of the board, our FY 1920 budget is moving along. We had a work session earlier this evening with the school board, and our next meeting will be the work session on February 28th at 7:00 PM with outside agencies. I am pleased to report that Warren County has been recognized again by the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, with the distinguished budget presentation award. This is for the FY 1819 budget. This will be the 19th consecutive year that Warren County has been recognized by GFOA on our budget. It's a tremendous honor and the direct result of continued efforts put forth by Finance Director Alfred Fletcher, Finance Consultant Carolyn Stimmel, and Finance Administration Assistant Connie Oden. Thank you guys for all your efforts. Budget transparency during the FY 2018 Future Goals Review, the board established a goal, goal number six, to more carefully review the cost expenses of the county. To address this goal and in an effort to enhance open government practices and financial reporting, Warren County will be launching in the next week its new financial transparency portal. Finance and administration staff partnered with OpenGov, a technology company offering cloud-based software for public sector budgeting reporting to provide a web-based financial transparency tool which presents the county's revenue and expenditures, and we'll have some more information on that coming the next week. Tourism Committee, the Joint Tourism Committee met on February 13th and discussed the objectives of its three subcommittees involving wayfinding signage, marketing and branding, and a local ambassador program. The contracts have been finalized with Fraser Associates for the wayfinding signage project, and hopeful that's going to get moving forward and kick off in the next month. Committee also discussed several projects to make priorities in the coming year, including a local business ambassador program to train employees, what the community offers for tourism, marketing tests for local tourism businesses, and a tourism grant program. Committee will meet again on April 27th. Rivermont Fire Station, as it stands, bids are due this Thursday, the 21st. Health and Human Services Complex, project is moving along, and we anticipate the voter registrar will be moving into the space in March after furniture is installed. That's pretty much all I have on my official report. Two other things I would like to note in working with the Virginia Association of Counties, Deputy Clerk Smouts has worked to schedule our Region Six meeting at the Virginia Inland Court on June 10th at 7:00 PM for all the counties in the Rio Grande Chando Valley. We'll have information out later, but invitations will go out to the counties, our state legislators, and other folks, so please be on the lookout for that. And lastly, I just had the opportunity last weekend to go see both Skyline and Warren Counties wrestling teams compete in the State 3A Championship. Skyline placed in fourth place, and Warren County in eighth place. Congratulations to both teams on a very successful wrestling season.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Stanley? Mr. Whittaker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I hand out my report, just a few items. On the February 11th, the Board Equalization met and had a three-hour training session with an official from the state. And then I, at the end of that training, I gave a shorter presentation on the Freedom of Information Act and the Conflict of Interest Act. And that's for the four regular members. The one alternate was not able to make the training, so he'll be doing the training at a later date. But I did submit the petition in order to the court to sign so that they can officially become Board of Equalization members and be sworn in before they begin their duties beginning of March. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Whittaker? Thank you.
I have one question. But never mind, I'll talk. That's me. Go ahead.
You sure?
Yeah.
Have you opted?
That's okay. That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I gotta do the motion.
Well, great.
I don't need that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, will you bring this out, please?
I move that the board certifies that each member's model, only public business matters are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Section 2.2-37/11 A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Independence Act. Only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion by which opposed meetings convene, were heard, discussed, or considered a meeting by the public law.
Second?
Is there any discussion?
Okay.
All in favor?
We'll call.
We'll call.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Clovis?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Sayer?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Okay, is there anything else to be discussed?
Mr. Chairman, it was brought to our attention by one of the intrepid reporters out there that in the motion for the career development plan, it was kind of bespoke where it said county's comprehensive plan, and it should have been compensation plan. And so if I may revisit this, this was item two under the consent agenda that Mr. Sayer pulled. If you'd like to remake that motion or not?
Of course, we need to do a motion reconsider.
Motion reconsider, please, item two.
Motion reconsider.
That's a motion.
You made your motion.
I make number two.
I'm making the motion reconsider first.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll second it. Okay. All right, agreed.
We're good.
Any discussion on that?
Notice that, you know, we just need to clean up the previous motion, and that's why I would be asking for reconsideration.
So you have to move?
Yeah, right now it's just for the reconsideration.
Okay.
All in?
Aye. Mr., do you want to make the motion?
Why don't you?
Okay. All right, this is regarding to the career development plan for Warren County Sheriff's Office. I think we're all in favor of it, but I think it was just kind of easily done, misspeak. And I think that the motion should be, I move that the board supervisors approve the implementation of the Warren County Sheriff's Office Career Development Plan into the county's Compensation Plan effective January 1, 2019.
Second?
Any other discussion on this?
Just that was an easy mistake to make since we had all sorts of things, people to comprehend the plan. Karen, I still think she did a great job reading the statement, but again, that's why, it was an easy mistake to make, so we need to clean it up.
Okay. All in?
Aye.
Next, public presentation. Ms. Smouts, has anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
Second call, anyone care to speak? Third call, anyone care to speak? This conference is closed, and if there's nothing else to be brought forward, we're adjourned.
She correct one.